To say thank you very much for joining us tonight. My name's Bec Hanley, you can hopefully see me on your screens now. I'm one of the people on this call from HKD Transition. So in case you don't know who we are, I know some of you are old friends of ours. But HKD stands for Hurstby Point, Hassex, Chima and Ditchling. So that's the area that we cover. And Transition, which is the other bit of our name, is what we're interested in. So our group is about looking at how we can live more sustainably as we transition to a time when we are starting to run out of fossil fuels like oil. And we do that through all sorts of ways, and some of those will be coming up tonight. So I won't talk in detail about those. A couple of things for housekeeping. If you could keep your microphone on mute unless we invite you to speak, we'd be really, really grateful. It just makes the experience easier for everybody. If you don't know how to mute, if you just wave at us and John, who is hosting this meeting, will mute your microphone for you. We've had loads of questions sent to us to pose to the candidates who are here tonight. If you have a question and you haven't already sent it to us, you're very welcome to put it into the chat function and we'll get to it if we can. So just in case you're not familiar with that, somewhere on your screen, on a PC, it's on the bottom. On an iPad, it's sometimes at the top, just to confuse you. There's a chat button and you just press on that, click on that and you'll see the chats and you can type a message. So you can put a chat, put a question in there and we'll get to it if we can. But we have got at the moment, I think, a dozen questions for the candidates to deal with. So I'm not quite sure how much time we're going to have. So I'm going to introduce the candidates and I'm just going to ask them to wave at you so that you can see them and maybe say hello, unmute yourselves and say hello in case anybody's got the speaker view on. So I'll shout out names and I'll ask them to introduce themselves. So I'm going to start with Nick Dearden. If you could just say hello, unmute, say hello, Nick. There he is with that green rosette. Hopefully you saw that. Thanks, Nick. And then I'm going to introduce Ian Dixon.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, thanks. So Nick is standing in Hurst and Ian is actually standing in Crawley for the Green Party, but is here tonight because there isn't anyone standing in Hassex for the Greens. For the Labour Party, I'm welcoming Alison Whelan.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I'm the Labour candidate for Hurstby Point and Borneo. It's good to see so many of you.
And Fred Burns.
Hi, I'm a candidate for Hassex and Burgess Hill South.
And for the Lib Dems, we've got Kirsty Lord.
Hi, I'm the candidate in Hassex and Burgess Hill South and the current councillor.
And Fiona Jackson.
Hello, I'm the candidate for Hurstby Point and Borneo.
And we've also got two Conservative Party candidates tonight. Joy Dennis, who is running late, she's in another urgent meeting. It's not that she doesn't want to be here, so she'll be joining us as soon as she can. But also welcome to Alex Simmons, who is here with very nice bookshelves behind him.
Hello, everybody. I'm the candidate for Hassex and Burgess Hill South.
So I'm going to explain to you or try and explain to you all the format for tonight because it is a little bit complicated, but we think it's going to work and give everybody a chance to have a say. So at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to give each candidate three minutes. And we've asked them to address two questions. So the first question is, if you were elected to West Sussex County Council, what could you do to address the climate emergency? And the second question is, the West Sussex County Council Climate Change Strategy only deals with the council's own operations. What could or should the council do to address the climate and ecological emergencies across the county? So the candidates have had those questions in advance. They've had time to prepare for them. And in a minute, I'm going to start asking them to speak. And we're going to ask them in alphabetical order of their last name. After that, we're going to move to questions. So we've had a whole series of questions and I'm going to, I'm going to come on to those in a minute. But we will, if you posed a question, I'll come to you and ask you to pose it again. But I'm going to ask you, if you are a question poser, not to kind of make a whole long speech just to ask your question, if you don't mind. And then each party, so not each candidate, but each party will have up to two minutes to answer the question. And I'll swap around which parties I go to first, so everybody gets a chance to go first. So we're planning to ask the questions grouped into themes around an organisation called the South East Climate Alliance or CICA. They've created this ABCD pledge, climate pledge, which I'm just going to share with you now, if I can. Okay, let me try that again. Yeah, it's there. Okay, I'm not going to share it with you because for some reason my screen is being weird. Now I can. There we go. So these are the four pledges from CICA. So the first one is Aim Higher. So it's about setting an emissions target for the whole council area, not just the councils, what the council owns. The second one is about building partnerships for action. The third one is about communicating on climate action. And the fourth one is about divesting from fossil fuels. So again, I'll go through those as we come to the questions on each one of them. So that's what we're going to be doing. It sounds complicated, but I think we'll be all right once we get going. We'll see how we go. So what I'm going to, and we're going to finish by nine o'clock. So we will not run after nine o'clock if anybody's waiting to have their dinner or a drink or a cup of tea. So I'm just going to tell you the order that I'm going to ask the candidates to speak in. So I'm going to start in a minute with Fred. Then I'm going to go to Nick, then Ian, then Joy, if she's managed to get to us by then. But otherwise, she'll go at the end. Then Fiona, then Kirsty, then Alex and then Alison. And again, a reminder that you're going to have three minutes each. You might, if you're, if you're a member of the audience, you might want to switch to speaker view so that if you haven't already done that, so you can just see the person who's speaking rather than everybody. And if anybody doesn't know how to do that, just drop a note into the chat box and we'll explain it to you. But I'm going to hand over now to Fred, who gets the honour of being the first speaker. And just a reminder, Fred, that Astrid will be timing you and we'll give you a warning at two minutes and 30 seconds. So off you go, Fred.
Thanks so much. Yeah, and thank you so much for the HKD Transition organising event. Climate change is not quite political and all parties have declared a climate emergency. But I want the audience here to remember today that throughout this hustings, listening to us all speak, you'll kind of think that we all have the same policy, but it's actually far from the case. The Tories really are just all talk and limited action. I intend to highlight this here. So first, a little bit about my background. On a very personal level, I got divorced recently. But before that, me and my ex-wife were so worried about climate change that we kind of rejected the idea of actually having children because of the grim predictions of what they would experience in their lifetime. And this is something that's just more and more common in my generation and younger generations. I really work up to the urgency of climate, the climate emergency. About six years ago, around the same time as the People's Climate March, and I've been involved in organising a climate march in London and have also attended a couple of Extinction Rebellion camps during their occupations. During this action, I've been convinced that a Labour government is the only way that our country will take the necessary action to tackle this emergency. The market cannot solve this crisis and we really need good government. So to be honest, my carbon footprint is not perfect by any means, but it's not our fault individually. We need systemic change and not a lot of blame. You can fly several times a year or own petrol cars and still want the government to make it much harder for you and everybody else to do so. We've been dealing with this COVID pandemic as a real emergency and it can be done. It just shows how little we've treated the climate crisis as a climate emergency so far. It's fantastic that West Sussex have declared a climate emergency, but the words of the Tory council do not correspond with the actions that they take. If we were really an emergency and treating it as an emergency, it would start to discourage private vehicle use, which would mean rejecting things like building major new roads. Yet the A27 bypass has been welcomed by the Tories and the Lib Dems. Labour oppose this and instead support the much less destructive Arundel alternative. The council would welcome better public transport, but instead they've slashed funding for many socially valuable bus routes, which have meant many people in small villages are either isolated or have had to resort to cars and taxis. The council would have stopped having investments in oil companies and embraced divestment in its pension funds. Instead, it has ignored calls for change and rejected a motion brought by Labour. It would work with the district council to stop approving bare minimum quality on housing, moving instead towards carbon neutral homes.
30 seconds warning, Fred, 30 seconds.
So if elected, I would make sure the council recognised the need for action in an emergency and would put people, communities and the environment at the core of every decision. And finally, just let me share a personal dream with you. I'm an avid cyclist and I really want to see the permanent cycle lanes built between Hurst and Ditchling and to the Downs. But I would actually go further. I know that there will be people that say it's not possible, but it's a dream nonetheless. I often cycle to Brighton, which is actually easier than you think as there is cycle path along the motorway and it actually doesn't take that long. But Clayton Hill is a nightmare.
That's three minutes, Fred.
All the way from Paikoo to Hassex. Thank you very much.
Well done, Fred. You got it in in three minutes. Okay, thank you very much for that. I'm going to move to, oh, Fred, just before we finish, I'm going to ask all the candidates to this, but have you signed the CICA pledge?
Me and Alison from Labour Party signed it quite a while back, so we're definitely on board.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to move to Nick now. Are you ready, Nick? Don't forget to unmute. Off you go. Yay.
There's my pledge. I detect a will to do much other than set targets for some time in the distant future from West Sussex County Council at the moment. In my experience, working private, public and charitable organisations of all sizes, from huge to tiny, the one thing I've noticed is that complacency is the preface to downfall. If you think you can carry on with business as usual, then it's going to fail. We're not going to succeed in tackling climate change at all. I think every decision, every service procurement from West Sussex County Council should be accompanied with the answer to the question, what's the impact on a climate emergency? If it's negative, then the action needs to be changed. I think the council should move to a committee system with a nominated head for climate emergency actions overseeing all council activity. There are a number of measures which I would work hard to get the council to adopt. Divesting from first fossil fuels, council buildings to be surveyed for putting on solar panels, those to be installed as quickly as possible, either with council funding, with the payback over many years, or having commercial interests set them up and give back some of the feeding tariffs. All council vehicles to be changed for electric power as they become life expired. And I was very disappointed that our local parish council announced the other day that they wanted to have an electric vehicle to replace their life expired one, but there's no charging point, so they weren't going to do it, which I think is rather weak. I think excluding use of single-use plastics within the council and all their outsourced options. Better polluting, a better monitoring of pollution hotspots. The giving public information probably daily, if we can do it. Stone Pound Crossroads is supposed to be the most polluted in Sussex. How many people knew that and what steps are being taken to do anything about that? We have all sorts of planning consents being given to massive housing estates with no cycle ways, no adequate pedestrian access, no local amenities, which forces everyone to use their car to. 30 seconds warning, Nick, 30 seconds. Very much. Everybody needs good homes. We need to ensure environmental standards are upheld locally, both in building consents and in granting planning permission. And just one very last point. The A2300 has been built, cutting off access north to south on two separate lanes. There are no cycle ways and no priority for public transport. How did the council approve that? That's something I would want to change. Time's up, Nick, thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick. You guys are doing well with keeping within your time. So I'm going to go to Ian next. Ian, are you good to go?
Sorry about that technical difficulty there. I do apologise.
That's all right. Just, and Ian, just checking before you go, we saw Nick there with the climate pledge. Have you signed it?
I've signed the climate pledge as well, yes.
Yeah, thank you. So you're good to go, Ian, thank you.
Right, thank you. I pretty much agree with everything that the last two speakers, Nick and Fred, have actually said. Climate change is the biggest issue that is facing humankind. We've never faced an issue quite as enormous and quite as serious as this. And we need to be serious about what we are doing about climate change and how we're going to tackle it. One of the things that came up in the 2019 election is as Labour and Green Party advocated a Green New Deal. I would say we need a Green New Deal for West Sussex. And that's just something that I would be trying to promote and trying to bring about if I were elected as a county councillor and what I would like to see West Sussex do. You've got to decarbonise the economy if we're going to cut back on carbon emissions. And that is what's causing climate change. It could also create green jobs by having a Green New Deal. And we've got to, we've got to have a recovery plan for COVID. Green new jobs could be one of that, part of that recovery strategy. We've got to insulate buildings and that could be something that, right across the county. Buildings and transport are two of the biggest carbon emitters. We need to do something about that. The last two speakers have touched on those things, but we have to do things on that. We need to create a green transport infrastructure around the county so that we could allow it, transport, electric and hydrogen powered transport to move around easily. So that's creating things like electric charging stations all around the area. We also need to persuade businesses and farmers to change their manufacturing and agricultural processes because they are two other big two carbon emitters. So that's something we need to do. Got to make better use of our waste as well. We know it's no good just dumping in it in landfill or taking it out to the sea and dumping it in the middle of the ocean somewhere. We can make energy from some of the waste we, we get rid of. We could also recycle some of the things that are in there. Metals, plastics, you know, there's lots of silicon devices and all these things that could be recycled and reused once more. We've got to try and encourage people to change their behaviours and their actions so that they are more environmentally aware in the things that they are doing, the actions and behaviours they have. So that's something I would like to see more of.
30 seconds, Ian, 30 seconds.
Other things could be community partnerships. We need to change all our transport, public and private, to electric and hydrogen powered, better transport networks for cycle and footpath, for example. More green areas around the whole county. I would like to see growing food. I like to get people to grow food, perhaps in their back garden or give more allotments available to people and in around the different councils.
Three minutes, Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. So I was going to go to Joy now, but as far as I can see, she hasn't joined us. So I'll, I'll get her to come last of all, so she gets time to catch her breath when she arrives, which means I'm going to go to Fiona Jackson next. Thanks, Fiona.
Very much, Bec. Can you hear me okay?
And you're still there, hooray. They haven't checked you out yet.
Fingers crossed I stay here for the next three minutes. So I'm going to endeavour to actually answer the question and do it both at once. You know, I'm going to incorporate the areas that I think West Sussex County Council needs to focus on and then what I feel I can do and add to that. So I think whilst somebody said, we think, we know they've signed a climate emergency, it feels like it was a watered down version and I would want to bring this back to the table to strengthen it because I feel that this issue's been too easily dismissed. And like Nick said, I'd encourage the council to use their influence on supply chain, working with their suppliers to insist on that collaborative work to make consistent improvement. Now, I've done this with supply chains and commercial roles and I really can help share how we can get that done here. I want to focus on that support for sustainable energy and that reduction in energy demand. So Easter Monday had the lowest carbon footprint ever in the UK due to the perfect demand-supply situation. It was windy, it was sunny and demand was down due to COVID. So how do we do this consistently? We need to increase the supply of this low carbon energy. You know, I was in the industry when the Lib Dem Secretary of State and now leader Ed Davey implemented policy on offshore wind. I would support continued development of these low carbon energy sources, but we need to make it work for both local residents in the UK. So we need to make sure things like the Rampian Project's distribution requirements are in the right place when they land in Wynham. And we need to continue to reduce demand. And I think I agree with Ian about, you know, we've lost that focus on energy efficiency through behaviour change. It's gone quiet. We need to put that behaviour change back into both the residential and industrial and commercial sectors. And with COVID reducing demand, we've got a great platform for work to work from. Let's not increase them. So I worked in the energy sector for 22 years. I've got lots of energy expertise to support the work here. And I would look to be the member of the Environment Scrutiny Committee where I would support practically with some of these transferable skills and experience. And then others have said, we need to focus on transport emissions. We need to get traffic off the road to make the biggest increase here. So, you know, that increasing access for bikes. And one of the things, one of the local residents I spoke to said in the middle of Hurstby Point is he can't get out of the village without risking falling down a significant pothole. So that puts people off. So whilst, you know, road surfacing, a big lane things is maybe not what we should support. We should get local curbside potholes filled. And we need to get those cycle lanes built. You know, at the Hurst Rethink meeting recently, I heard it's taken years of trying to get that Orban to Hassex route up and running. So we need to speed up that decision making and get focused.
30 seconds, Fiona.
And then have a campaign to put back bikeability so that our children learn to cycle safely. It's gone down from five days to one and a half hours. We need to put public transport easily available and green, as we've said, and the charging points for electric vehicles with a joined up approach. We've got to get it in new build in lampposts as a matter of course. And reducing waste and increasing recycling, you know, Lib Dems are really good. We're in the top lead tables with DEFRA for recycling at other county councils whereas West Sussex is number 60. So I would work with my colleagues to learn from that best practice and bring it back into West Sussex. And I have to talk about diversity, but that's my three minutes up.
So you can save that for an answer on something. Thank you, Fiona. And can I just check with you, have you signed the CICA climate pledge?
After checking with you some of the details, Bec, yes, I have. Because as you know, I wanted to understand what the first one meant, but now I do, I will.
Thanks Fiona, thank you very much. So I'm going to move on to Kirsty now. So Kirsty, time's starting.
Got my pledge there. So in the April 2019 climate change debate, the council didn't actually declare a climate emergency because the Conservative group watered it down. And in the end, the council only noted the call to declare a climate emergency. Although symbolically, I think it would have really helped highlight the issue to residents. I think what really matters now is that the council actually does something about the climate emergency. The county council can't change or make laws, but as a body and via individual councillors, we have plenty of soft power in engaging and influencing to make change happen beyond the areas that we control. And working with our districts and borough councils, residents and local businesses is critical to that. If I'm re-elected, I'll continue to work on projects I've championed. I've successfully secured funding for Sayers Common to Downland cycle route and improved the A273 cycle path. I sit on the MSDC Group Monitoring Air Quality at Stone Pound. I'm encouraging our parish council to rewild verges. My party, we advocate for improved bus routes and we propose more funding for cycling and walking in this year's budgets. But I also want to focus on what the council and councillors can do across the county, not just work here in our community. Firstly, the council's in a great position to educate, engage and encourage people and businesses to make positive change. Not every resident is as engaged as the people here today. Everyone's at a different point in their journey. I know that from my own experience. I know that one of the most valuable things I can do as a councillor is engage with people and facilitate conversations and learnings. While I have a lot of respect for our parish councils, for example, that's only one element to engaging and acting on climate change. One example is my work on the flooding working group in Hassex, where I'm bringing an expertise from West Sussex on highways, flooding and emergency resilience over the coming months to help us develop practical solutions to climate change induced flash flooding. At the other end of the spectrum, my Facebook post on recycling, specifically photos of the scrunch test in my own kitchen, resulted in nearly 200 shares and thousands of views. The other thing I'm keen to do is bring the voice of residents and groups into the county council. During that climate change debate, I proposed an amendment where, that we should create both a voluntary organisations forum, bringing groups like HKD in and a citizens' assembly. And that was turned down, but I'd like to make that happen now that the climate change strategy is in place. I'm also really interested in reporting and accountability. My amendment included a number of practical measures, including incorporating climate change assessments into all decision reports. I propose that responsibility for climate change targets would be in the portfolios of all cabinet members and executive directors.
30 seconds, Kirsty.
But I'd like to make it happen. I'm worried at the moment that high profile policies like Wildflower verges risk being nothing more than greenwashing. Planting wildflowers at Shepherd's Walk next to 130 new homes on a field that weren't required in any plan is one example. Finally, it's worth noting that during debates on the COVID reset plan, it was the Liberal Democrats who proposed that climate change should be the overarching theme to the reset plan. And despite opposition from Conservative Cabinet members, we managed to get enough support to get it through.
Three minutes, Kirsty.
West Sussex does incorporate climate change impact into everything it does as we recover from COVID.
Thank you, Kirsty. Thank you very much. So I'm going to move to Alex now, if you're ready, Alex.
Yes, just give me two seconds to unmute. Yes, ready when?
Great, off you go then.
Hi, everybody. It's an honour to be invited to talk by HKD this evening. I've had a great deal of respect for the work they've undertaken in helping mitigate some of the flood risks in Hassex. I'm a member of the Hassex Parish Council and the working group. I've actually worked in the sustainability industry for over 15 years, working with some of the largest carbon sequestering schemes like Community out in New Kwaigwa. I have a detailed knowledge of the scale and size of the problems we're facing. There's no magic bullet. We can't, example, just go and plant trees and we get through this situation. You can, well, you could. It's like you could plant a trillion trees. It would take close to a billion square miles. You know, that's the equivalent of North America. I know what you're thinking, not a bad plan, just cover it all in trees. I'm aware and have experience of what can crop up when analysing the footprints, when doing all of this stuff. Ideas that seem on paper like they're really, really good. So one of the prime examples for this is you're kind of moving to a plant-based diet. You can move to a plant-based diet. It seems a no brainer. It reduces your CO2. It's like between a normal diet and a vegetarian diet, it's about 500 kilograms of CO2. But if you then have to drive further to get that food or that food is flown in, you have green beans flown in from overseas from North Africa or Kenya, or you, you know, take to eating the, quite frankly, delicious avocado. They're flown in from Mexico. Two avocados have the same carbon footprint as close to one and a half kilos of locally produced beef. The key is that there is no magic bullet. There is no single solution. It's to reduce the travel time of your food. It's by far the most effective solution. The current UK target for carbon reduction is at least, is at least 68%. Contrast to the EU, they've set it at 55%. West Sussex County Council should actually be applauded for going for the net zero by 2030. In this regard, they've managed to actually reduce their carbon footprint already by 49.5% from their 2011 baseline. If we compare that to the greenest council by appointment, Brighton, they've managed to 36% saving in the same time. West Sussex County Council are now generating almost 16 megawatts of power by our sustainable sources like solar. Brighton are on half a megawatt. So what would I fight for if I was elected? What I'd like to do is I'd like to see a portion of the savings that are gained from the installation of solar and from renewable energy and have them ring fenced and then used exclusively to the installation of more sustainable power.
30 seconds, Alex.
Go through, okay. Offsetting should only be done at the very final point. It's not cheap. There's very little point to offset the carbon footprint of the current county council. It costs half a million pounds. It's like, the idea is travel less by car. What can the council do outside of this? You know, don't travel by plane, don't travel by car. I want to see sustainability projects as a matter of course when they're proposed to the council. I'd like to see them fast-tracked so that that lengthy planning process can be.
Three minutes, Alex.
Taken down, right, okay. Can I just add, I was going to say, the recent. Right, okay. Can I just add, I was going to say, the recent common ground with Fred here. I too am an avid cyclist and I want to cycle path over Clayton Hill.
Hey, we found some common ground. Well done for sneaking that in, Alex. Thank you very much. Just to say to everybody, Joy Dennis has now arrived. So welcome, Joy. I'm going to slot her in last so that she just has time to catch her breath. So that means I'm going to go to, oh, Alex, before we move on, have you signed the Seeker Climate Pledge?
I was not aware of the Seeker Climate Pledge until you told me this morning. So you told me like when I joined the meeting. So I will have a look at it before moving.
Thank you very much. That's brilliant. And I'm going to move to Alison now.
Good evening, everybody, and many thanks for attending tonight. And I'm sorry that you've had to put up with so much, but hopefully I won't be the least, the least impressive candidate. It's an interesting discussion, this, and I feel somewhat guilty. I think I'm from that generation, those baby boomers who seem to have been most profligate with our climate and with our environment. So I come to the discussion with a bit of guilt, in fact, a lot of guilt. But I also take heart from the Extinction Rebellion mantra, which is there should be no blame and no shame. I also feel that we should tell the truth, we should act now and we should go beyond politics, all of which Extinction Rebellion have quoted. So were I to be elected into West Sussex County Council this May, I think what I would do is exactly has been said by others, and that is to interrogate every decision made by the council in terms of how that would affect the climate emergency. How would this decision affect the climate emergency? And if we're not able to get an answer that allows us to believe it will be either neutral or beneficial, then I think we should look at the decision again. I think that's the least I could do as a member of the council. Fred has said that Labour has been committed to carbon neutrality by 2030 for many months now. And I think it's something that we all would agree needs to happen. So I think for me, again, that would be something that needs to be trumpeted with County Council and with members. People have mentioned planning and housing. I'm not a NIMBY because I think we wouldn't have had a city like Brighton if it had stayed being a seaside village. Or London wouldn't have become the global city of tears if it had not developed. But I do feel we can put some, some controls and conditions into that planning and say, you must use solar panels, you must use air-source heat pumps. We're not doing that. And I know that the tariff is not around anymore for solar panels, but what's to stop the County Council saying to developers, please do that? And we need that to be done across our county to allow much more environmentally-friendly housing and to have as little impact on the environment as we can. None of the other candidates yet have mentioned fracking. I would like to do that and say to you all that I am against fracking in all of its forms and would heartily oppose any attempt to reignite the fracking debate in West Sussex. I don't think it's beneficial for the environment in any way. And certainly we want to go away from fossil fuel.
Thirty seconds Alison.
From the council's point of view, I think it needs to educate people. That's been mentioned by other candidates. We need to do that. It needs to be clear about its refuse policy and recycling, encouraging FreeCycle, Gumtree, eBay, in order to reuse our items and reuse our goods. There's a lot we can do and I'm hoping that I can be there to help do it.
Thank you Alison. She says unmuted now. And I think Fred said that you've, you've signed the Climate Pledge. Yay, thank you very much. So I'm now going to welcome Joy Dennis. Joy was at another urgent meeting, which is why she couldn't be with us in the alphabetical order, but she is with us now. So Joy, I'm going to just remind you, you've got three minutes to respond to those two questions that we sent you in advance. So I can't see you on my screen, but I know you're here. So what we're going to do now, thank you very much to all the candidates. What we're going to do now is we're going to move to questions from the audience. So as I said, what we're going to do is we're going to group them according to the four Seeker Climate pledges. But we're going to start with questions that came in before the meeting tonight. So if you submitted a question in advance, we're going to be going to those questions first. Once we've done all of those, we'll come to questions that have been put into the chat tonight. I'm just going to point out to the candidates, you're going to have two minutes per party, not per candidate, to answer each question. But I now think I've got getting on for 20 questions. So if you take two minutes, we won't get through them. So I'm going to urge you to be as succinct as you possibly can be so that we can get through all the questions. I'll take the parties in different orders for each question. So it won't always be Greens first or Tories first or Labour first. We'll go through with different questions. If I call your name, could you put your question? And if you, if the person isn't here, I will read the question out. But the first question I've got, so hang on, sorry, Conservatives. The first Seeker pledge is about aiming higher. So it's about setting an emissions target for the whole council area of at least 68% reduction on 1990 levels by 2030. So we've grouped some questions that are about emissions and things like that. So I'm going to start with a question from Juliette Maryfield. So Juliette, if you'd like to ask your question.
Yes, I'd like to note first of all that West Sussex is the only county council in the Seeker South East Climate Alliance area that has not set an area-wide target for carbon reduction, only a target for the council's own operations. So within that, another target that the council has set is quite a modest one for recycling. So every council has to have a target for recycling. West Sussex is aiming for 55% of its waste collected by 2025. 65% reduction of, will be recycled by 2035. Now, the top 10 councils in the country in 2019 to 20 recycled more than 60% already. West Sussex only managed 53%. Several candidates have mentioned waste and recycling, but in practical terms, what do you think West Sussex County Council could or should do? We're doing our bit in Hassex with a repair cafe, keeping things out of landfills. What more specific things could West Sussex County Council do to reduce waste and to increase recycling?
So thank you Juliette for that question. Just a reminder that it's two minutes per party. And I'm going to start this one with the Conservatives. So I don't know if Alex or Joy wants to take that, but two minutes to respond to that question.
Joy, do you want to take that?
You. Alex, do you want to add to that or can I move that one on?
No, go for it. Move along.
Thank you very much for being so succinct. So can I move to the Greens? Nick or Ian?
Okay, I'll answer that. Food waste could be made into compost, which could be sold back to the local communities at a low cost. It also could be turned into energy and that could be sold back at cheaper cost if we set up perhaps low, our own energy companies around the county and use some of that waste. I mentioned in my opening remarks, we could recycle much of the waste that is created and reuse that specifically. We need to actually be much more direct in all parts of the county in recycling those, those things that are thrown away. So I would want West Sussex County Council to actually ensure that not only the, the the recycling rates percentages are much higher than the 55%, that is terrible, absolutely appalling. I would want that to be increased 10%, 10% every year from now on as a target and ensure that we got 100% recycled by 2030. But also, those are the sort of things I would do with, with waste.
Thank you Ian. Nick, anything quickly to add to that?
No, that's fine.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to move on to the Labour Party. So Fred or Alison?
Alison, how do you feel about that?
I'm quite, I'm going to be quite succinct actually, so you may want to come back. I agree entirely. We should be looking at composting food, composting garden waste. Already we've got a really good uptake of small electrical appliances being added to the refuse collection, which I think is fantastic. Otherwise you have to search for somewhere to take it. But I think I would agree with Juliette. We need to look at how we reuse things, how we renew some things, refurbish them and allow this built-in obsolescence, which seems to bedevil many appliances that we have, to just be stopped. So work with business to say, actually, can't we just repair our washing machines rather than throw them away? Can't we just repair our refrigerators rather than throw them away? And can't we just buy old furniture? We seem to like antiques in this country. Why don't we just use old furniture instead of building new?
Thanks Alison.
I'll just add to that, the, I mean, one, one important aspect is the, obviously the waste and recycling centres that we have in West Sussex. And at the moment, they are kind of, they're being rationed. And which will kind of lead to like fly tipping. And like the Labour policy is basically, we would have household waste and recycling centres open seven days a week without rationing, without having to book in. And I think that that's an important part of that. There are many things I can say and a lot of things I agree on, but I'll pass on.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to move to the Lib Dems now. Kirsty and Alison, I don't know who wants to, Fiona, who wants to speak?
I'm going to start and Kirsty's going to fill in any gaps that I missed. And so, you know, thank you for bringing that up Juliette, because actually, as you, you know, as I pointed out, three of those five in that top level are Lib Dem-owned councils. And I did already say, I think we need to learn. Other people have done it. Why are we not talking and asking what the key mitigating factors they've done? But from my own opinion, there's things like that repair cafe model that was set up. You know, we could have a TV programme that encourages people to take things out of a dump, do it up and sell it on. If we can have a TV programme, why can't we have that locally? You know, we need to educate people about what can be recycled and what can't. You know, Kirsty's point about that silver foil ball that we learned. These little nudges are things that change people's behaviour in easy ways, you know. Another great example of a nudge that we could think about, we've done that worked, the 5P on carrier bags. You know, that was a Lib Dem idea, but it's really had a massive impact. So what are the small little behaviour change models can we create to encourage people not to use as much as they use and to recycle more than they do now? Kirsty?
And yeah, the one thing I wanted to add on food waste, to be honest, it's quite embarrassing that we're only just getting this in, in West Sussex. I lived in Ealing in West London and we had it 15 years ago. And when we moved here, we were horrified that we didn't. And now we're just moving in mid Sussex to a trial. Aaron District Council, which has been Lib Dem-run for two years, is moving straight to implementation because it's so important. So yeah, that's just the one thing I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you all of you for being really succinct. Juliette, do you want to come back with a succinct response?
Just to say that nobody's talked about the circular economy, which is ways of making sure that one person, one company's waste is the raw materials for another. And I think there's more that the County Council could really be doing to encourage that within the county.
Thank you Juliette. I'm going to move us straight on and I've got a question from Charlotte Wilson about buses.
Hello, everybody. Yes. I was just wanting to know how, well, what the candidates feel about regional bus services and what your position is on whether bus services are up to scratch at the moment and how and why they should be improved.
Thank you very much Charlotte. So I'm going to go to the Greens first for that one. While they, Ian?
Hello. First of all, Crawley, we have a metro bus company. They are hoping to actually change through hydrogen-powered buses by about 2025. That will be a start, right across the region where we could have a whole fleet of buses powered by hydrogen, not diesel anymore. Clearly, we need to improve our public transport and buses make up a major part of that public transport system. We need to have more buses so that people in, out in the countryside, more remote areas are easily able to get to, around. That needs more investment in our public transport system, especially for outlying regions and areas. I think maybe we've got to work cooperatively, the council, with some of the bus companies. I mean, preferably, I would like to actually get rid of them, get away from private companies into, back to a sort of nationalised public system, but I don't suppose that's going to happen very quickly. So we need to ensure and perhaps help the bus companies provide more buses, more regular services to ensure that people can get around the area. That's what I'd like to see West Sussex County Council trying to do. We'll cooperate with partnership deals with the bus companies to ensure that we do have a better bus network around the county.
Thanks Ian. Nick, anything to quickly add?
No, not to get again.
Thank you. So I'm going to move to the Lib Dems next. Kirsty and Fiona, I don't know who wants to take that one.
I'll, I'll take that one. Yeah, so the, the buses. This is, the Liberal Democrats at West Sussex are very keen on, on improving. There was a piece of work a few years ago looking at removing subsidies for, for buses, which one of my colleagues, Kate O'Kelly vigorously opposed with our support. And last year in the budget, we proposed money being put specifically towards working on bus partnerships and looking at regional franchising because buses are so important. Particularly with our rural areas, if you don't have bus services connecting people to the ever-increasing centralisation of health services and things like that, you're just not going to be able to allow people to move around in the most environmentally-friendly way. And it's absolutely critical that we have a better bus network. More frequent buses mean that people will be more inclined to use them. And that's one thing that, as I said, my colleague Kate in particular has, has been leading on and that we will continue on over the, the coming years, really pushing that case for increased investment in our buses.
Thank you. Fiona, do you want to add anything?
Only to add from my own experience that we need to make sure it connects to the other transport links that we have, particularly here. You know, Hassex Car Park for the station, nightmare, used to be. You know, hopefully post-Covid, it won't go quite back to that. But we need to make sure that, you know, we are getting people away from the cars and onto the buses because it gets to the trains at the right time.
Thank you. And we're going to move to Labour. So Fred or Alison?
Hi, I'll start. And so Labour's policies, we have, you know, very strong support for public transport. And we've been opposing the cuts to the bus routes and opposing the cuts to the rail passes as well for pensioners and opposing the abolishing of the Young Persons Three-in-One Cards to get young people to schools and colleges. So it's, it's something that we're really passionate about and I pretty much agree with everything the Lib Dems just said as well. Alison, do you have anything to add?
No, and I absolutely agree. We live in a rural county. And if you're a teenager stuck in some rural part of the country trying to get anywhere, it's extremely difficult and you need to have a safe, reliable bus because the pavements don't exist, the potholes do. And getting from A to B can become quite dangerous and that's unacceptable for our youngsters as well as for our elderly. So I would absolutely support all that's been said.
Thank you. And I'm going to move to the Conservative Party. So Joy or Alex? I don't know who wants to go first. Joy, Alex, did you want to add anything?
Well, as I say, all I can say is that you say more support for the local bus services. What you're actually saying is just giving more public money to a private company to provide a service which currently is inadequate. Will it, will it be improved enough? It's like, without kind of central government taking a stand and forcing certain kind of companies with their routes to do what's kind of required, especially with the rural community. And I'm not sure that just increasing the funding, that the kind of, that the West Sussex taxpayer pays is necessarily a good move.
Thanks Alex. Charlotte, do you want to briefly respond?
Yeah, interesting points. It's, it's a tricky one, isn't it? Yeah, I don't really know what to, what to add apart from I, it is chicken and egg. And if you put the services, you know, I wouldn't get a bus into Brighton. I would love to, but I can't get back. And we won't use the bus. So, but if the service was there, I'd use it.
Thank you Charlotte. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to move on to the next question now. It's quite a long question and I can see David Hammond is with us. So David, you've got a question about farming. You need to unmute David.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much Ben. Yeah, I have a follow-up question.
Thank you very much, Ben. Yeah, a follow-up question for all the candidates. A recent study published in the journal Science gives one of the most comprehensive analysis to date on the detrimental effects farming can have on the environment and included data on nearly 40,000 farms in 119 countries. The findings reveal that meat and dairy production is responsible for 60% of agricultural greenhouse gas emissions. While the products themselves provide just 18% of calories and 37% of protein levels around the world. As a county councillor, what could the candidates do to lessen the detrimental environmental effects of farming in the county?
Thank you, David. So for that question, I'm going to come to the Labour Party first.
Do you want to take that, Fred, or?
They're both looking slightly like, oh.
I, I, I mean, I think it's, I mean, I think it's an extraordinarily difficult question to answer, really. Um, I think, uh, many, many people now are using their diet as a way of protesting the greenhouse gases that are, that are, uh, produced by farming. So we have increasing numbers of vegans and vegetarians and pescetarians, which is one way of doing it. But on the other hand, we have people making a livelihood and a living out of, um, farming. So I think the county council's position is really to assess what's happening in our own county. Where are we with, in terms of arable to animal farming and try and support those farmers who feel they could do and would want to do something different, maybe organically, maybe, um, uh, rewilding, for instance. Um, but I think we have to be sensitive to the fact that this is people's livelihoods. And with Brexit and the farming subsidies completely changed, it's going to be a very complicated issue. So I think for me, it's a lot of learning about what that would mean, but it's also talking and being part of a council that listens and looks, bringing that environmental um, factor into what the, the decisions are that they make. But it's not something we can do together. These are people at the end of the day whose livelihoods are depending on their milk or dairy herd. So for me, it's, it's that. I don't know, Fred, whether you wanted to add anything?
I would just add that, um, the council has a responsibility to kind of educate. I grew up as a, as a vegetarian. Um, I've, in recent years, kind of gone the reverse direction and become a vegetarian. Um, but I think that, uh, you know, I think it's okay to eat small quantities of meat, um, as long as it's good quality. And, you know, that's, that's kind of what my ethos is. And I think that, um, we just need to educate around that. We, we need to kind of, we need to, people need to know what factory farming is and what factory farming does. Um, and, um, yeah, that's all I'd add. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred and Alison. So I'm going to move to the Conservatives now. So I don't know if Joy or Alex want to take that one?
Um, Joy, shall I start? It's not as simple as, as David said, it's like, you've got various things in there, you've got various kind of bits that are going through, but it depends on what you're eating, it depends on where it comes from. Um, the kind of like the carbon from all of these things can be calculated, but as soon as you put the transport into any of your food, it doesn't matter what your diet is. If you're flying your vegetables in from halfway around the world, they're not going to be green, no matter what you do. The best thing that the council can do is educate the local population and eat local, eat locally sourced products and eat what is in season. That is the by far the best thing you can do for your diet and for the kind of environment around you. Um, and that will also help our local farmers and our local farmers tend to produce the high-end foods. They're producing the high-end kind of bits that we want. And currently lots of the pork that's produced in West Sussex is flown out to China. So, Joy?
Hi, and Alex, I'm going to move to the Lib Dems now. So Kirsty and Fiona.
Um, so I'll admit upfront, farming isn't something I know huge amounts about. Um, I do know a little, um, and I'll, I'll share that, but I acknowledge it's not something I know huge amounts about. Um, I think I'd be interested, David, to know, um, where your stats come from. Cause I know sometimes when some of these stats are quoted, that actually they can be based on studies in the US where, um, beef, for example, is farmed much more intensively than a lot of the, the farming in Britain and, um, sort of, for example, grass-fed beef would have substantially, um, different emissions to something that's intensively farmed. So I think we need to kind of understand a little bit more what actually is the impact within West Sussex. What are we talking about here? And what are the farming practices that are most sustainable? I think in terms of the county council, um, what the county council can do is perhaps around kind of the farming business, like working, working with our producers um, to support them, to support them in terms of, um, selling, promoting their, um, good quality products, which we have, we have a lot of food suppliers within, within West Sussex. And potentially encouraging diversification into other businesses that are more suitable for our land. I know there seems to be an awful lot of wine that is grown, being grown now in, in West Sussex. And perhaps the kind of future for, for West Sussex farming could be different. Um, but it's something I'm afraid I, I don't know huge amounts on. So that's probably where I should, I should pause.
Thirty seconds, Fiona.
Only to reinforce that, that to me, it's that shopping local and getting good quality, you know, which we've got some great butchers in our villages. Um, I, I, I'm never going to stop my husband eating a bit of steak. I'm pretty sure from a diet perspective. So we just need to make sure that we're, they're doing it the best way we can and not doing the flying in version. And we're just avoiding those emissions.
Okay. Thank you, Fiona. I'm sorry if I cut in on you. My internet connection is unstable. So it might be me storming out rather than you. Um, I'm going to go to the Green Party now. So, um, yeah, guys.
Yep.
Nick, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Nick.
Yeah, um, working with a, um, an organic farmer, friend of mine. Um, he has had his, uh, whole process very carefully, uh, a- assessed by universities, two of them. Um, and he's actually sequestered carbon every year. Uh, he was grass-fed organic beef and he's now moved to organic dairy. Um, he's very, very careful how he does it with careful mob grazing. He ma- manages the diet of the animals very carefully. So the council could, um, spread this knowledge far and wide around the county as, uh, uh, the, the sort of things that work positively. And of course, the council has responsibility, at least in part, for the South Downs National Park, um, which is a very large landowner, uh, or it covers a huge area with a lot of farming on it. And they could also be encouraging and working hard with the different farmers, making sure that they understand uh, what it is that, uh, makes, uh, the, 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 the environment, um, more sustainable.
Thanks, Nick. Ian, anything to add?
Um, just to say, I think we import something like 75 to 80% of our food that we consume in the UK from abroad. And it's, uh, we don't grow anywhere near what we used to sort of 50 years ago or so. Uh, I think we need to encourage farmers maybe to, uh, change over to organic, uh, farming as Nick has suggested and other, other speakers have suggested. Um, maybe we try and, uh, try and, uh, encourage people to eat less meat or go vegetarian or vegan. Maybe cut down to say eating meat two or three days a week instead of every day. And more controversially, possibly what about putting a tax on McDonald's and Burger King and for every burger they sell, we charge them a bit of tax, uh, perhaps a, a, a green tax of some sort for meat production or use.
That's two minutes, Ian.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ian, and thank you, everybody. David, do you want to come back briefly with a response?
Uh, yeah, I, I just think the comment, this is a people's livelihood, but we're talking about climate change here and the future young generation, um, are worried to death that they're not going to have a future. Sure. So my question was related to when the councils, can the prospective councillors become councillors? What would they do in this particular county to actually offset what the journal science said? And, and in, in answer to, uh, Kirsty, it was the journal science, which I know is American based, so I take your point on that. Um, but going over to organic farming, I think is a good thing. And like Alex said, I think promoting, I mean, I take his point that you fly things over and it sort of takes away from the carbon uh, sort of footprint of that. So we need to, I think, grow more, more organic food ourselves. We need to cut down on the amount of meats that people consume. We need to do that. I think it's important. If we are to take climate change seriously, we can't ignore serious academic journals like journal science and the extensive, um, sort of studies that they've done. To ignore those is not to care for the future generation, in my opinion. And the one thing that was missing that does surprise me is actually educating the schoolchildren into eating a more plant-based diet, which I've read in the papers recently that they want to do.
Thank you, David.
These are all steps in the right direction. It's all very well saying, we like the taste of meat and we're never going to give it up. Well, what's that say about the seriousness in tackling climate change? It's ignoring the real issues, the real problems.
Thank you, David. Really interesting question. I'm going to move us on now on the subject of education. I've got a question from John Willis um, about our local schools.
Yes, hello, everybody. Actually, yes, I feel slightly sheepish that this is, um, sort of taking us down to, to perhaps a relatively narrow area, but it, it sort of touches on the whole business of, um, just how significant things like heating and energy efficiency and the efficiency of our homes is, is just how significant that is actually in this whole climate change concern. Actually, but particular concern I had, you know, we, we, HKD have got this long involvement with, um, Downland School, our local secondary school in Hasec's. Um, they're still struggling, you know, with, with areas, um, that, that, uh, you know, where the, the, the school could be significantly more energy efficient with final improvements on, on their rather ancient areas of their heating systems and still some single glazed windows and, and very inefficient light fittings. So it would be interesting just to know, um, candidate's attitude, you know, to this, i- is this something that could be sort of ratcheted up the, the, the priority scale?
Thank you, John. So for that question, I'm going to take the Lib Dems first.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I think there is, um, I, I know, um, a little of what HKD has been, has been doing at, um, at Downlands. Um, and I think there is something that we need to do. So one of the things that we talked about, um, so in the climate change strategy, I'm on the, um, climate change advisory group at the county council. Um, I'm not, I'm one of five councillors. We're not there to be experts because I'm, I'm not, and I'm not going to pretend that I am. But we're there to kind of bring in that local perspective and to ask kind of, you know, be a critical friend and ask questions. And one of the things we've talked about there is, you know, the climate change strategy is looking at reducing, um, our emissions, getting to, um, net zero by 2030. And one of the biggest ways that the council can do that is by making its buildings much more efficient. And that's going to have to be one of the biggest focuses if this climate change strategy is to be delivered. It's not just our schools. We have council buildings that are in a very poor state as well. Um, the council building at Durrington, um, particularly. Um, so there's going to have to be significant amounts of investment in those buildings, double glazing them, thinking about solar panels, thinking about the energy that's used. And that's going to have to be a focus, um, for the council going forward. Um, otherwise they're never going to meet the, these targets. That's definitely something that has to be looked at in more detail.
Fiona, anything to add?
No, other than it's, you know, e- existing buildings are, uh, much harder to get that energy efficiency than the new build buildings. And so I think that we've got to recognise the practicalities and push on the funding. Push on the funding and push on the prioritisation of which elements of that are going to reduce and be the most energy efficient and most quickly.
Okay. Thank you both. I'm going to move to the Conservative Party now. Joy and Alex?
I, I was gonna say, can I just say, one of the straightforward things, the kind of easiest things that West Sussex County Council could do, and what I'd push for if I was elected, is to make sure that the energy suppliers for the estate, for all the schools and everything else, those energy suppliers produce all of their energy from renewable source. It's a very easy kind of like thing that can be done straight away. You just change your supplier. Suddenly your electricity is a hundred percent from renewable. It cuts down on all of those emissions from that building. So at the moment, I think, what is it? A computer base 10 kilograms of carbon every eight hours it's on. As soon as that energy comes from a sustainable source, that goes to zero. So I don't understand why this hasn't already been done. So Joy?
Both, uh, let's move to the Green Party. Who's going to unmute out of you two? Ian is.
Damn.
You cracked first, Ian.
Um, I, yes, I show, uh, I agree with quite a lot of what the last two speakers have said. Um, we, we do need to insulate, uh, a lot of our buildings, existing buildings and in any new build. Um, that is something that, uh, should be, uh, taken place straight away because as I said in my opening remarks, uh, buildings are one of the biggest carbon emitters that we have, uh, and therefore insulation will cut down that emission, carbon emission. Also to make them more energy efficient would be good and maybe setting a target, perhaps since 2030, as suggested, wouldn't be a bad idea of trying to get most of your public buildings possibly insulated and energy efficient. I think those are the sort of things. We need the funding for that. So that is something that, uh, would also need to follow up and ensure that happens. Um, if we, it could also, um, as I, that's, could also create the green jobs I was talking about in my opening remarks as well. And get people employed for those who, people who may have already lost jobs because of COVID. This could be, uh, something that the council could take up as a policy and put into action as soon as possible. So yes, all those schools and all those other public buildings and all other buildings that we are able to do, let's make sure they are insulated and energy efficient.
Thanks, Ian. Nick, anything briefly to add? I think you've probably got seconds if you want to add anything.
No, not at all. Um, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And the Labour Party, who's going to go for you?
Alison, I'll let you go first.
Okay. Um, I, I, I mean, I think everyone's said what, what I would have, would have said, which is that we clearly need to retrofit um, insulation, double glazing and whatever's required. And the funding needs to be found because I think if anything is going to allow the county council to be taken seriously, it's at least making its own buildings environmentally uh, neutral and improving the, um, the carbon footprint they have. So I would agree with what's been said previously.
Thank you. Did you want to add to that, Fred?
Um, I, I need to say, yeah, it's something we, we really have to do. And we need to find the money to be able to do it. It's, it's just got to be done in the next 10 years. So, yeah.
Thank you. John, do you want to come back on it?
Uh, perhaps just briefly, um, yeah, the, the point about down on jazz, of course, we, we, me and, and of course you Beck and Juliette, we're, we're all heavily involved in raising the money for the solar panels at Downland. So that, uh, that's why we've got, we know that, that's so intimately. Um, but yeah, I, I guess the, what, what, what we are touching on, of course, is this is the whole business of, um, making, um, well, things like ground source heat pumps that have been mentioned in the chats to, to, to make that economically viable and, and this whole business of efficiency on existing housing stock and old buildings. This is, I guess we really need central government, don't we? To, to, we, we, the, the county councils, of course, can only achieve so much, but, uh, I think we, we had a clear indication that all people's hearts are definitely in the right place. We just need central government to, to back it, I'm afraid.
Thank you, John. Thanks for that. I'm going to move on now. I'm just conscious of the time. You've got about 10 minutes left for, for questions. And there are still a few to work through. And I'm going to move on to the second part of the plu- climate pledge, which is about building partnerships for action. So through things like climate assemblies, advisory boards and climate forums. So Jemima, I'm sure you're on the call somewhere. I can't see you at the moment, but you actually sent in three questions, I know. But can I ask you to pose your question about the West Sussex People's Assembly, please? Where are you, Jemima?
Hi, hi, I'm unmuted now, sorry.
That's all right.
I haven't got my video on.
Don't worry.
But yes, just People's Assembly. Would, would we like, and would you support hearing from local people about local solutions? Could we, could we organise a People's Assembly to advise West Sussex County Council on, on the way forward on both climate and biodiversity issues?
Thank you very much. So I'm going to go to the Conservatives on that one first. So Joy and Alex. Joy, Alex, did you want to add anything?
All I'm going to say is that, you know, some of the greatest ideas come from crowdsourcing from the general public. So the more people you have, the more ideas you can have, the more ideas that you go, ooh, I didn't think of that. So I, I would always welcome more input from kind of a more diverse crowd and a more kind of just more people. You're going to find those edge cases that you're looking for. Do you go, I didn't think of that. No one's thought of that. Let's do it. So, yes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to move to the Green Party now. Ian and Nick? Thank you very much. I'm going to move to the Green Party now. Ian and Nick. Ian.
Yes, actually, I agree with the last speaker very much. I'm a big fan of People's Assemblies. You know, it's proper democracy, it's people participating in a discussion about very important issues like climate change. So yes, let's have more of it. I agree. Yeah, there's a lot of expertise out there, a lot of good ideas, which not necessarily in small groups, perhaps in the sort of council chambers, you're already going, readily going to come up with. So yeah, let's have them. Let's have more of them because this is good participatory democracy at work. And it really does work. And I've been part of People's Assembly myself in the past in different things. And I think it's something that we should encourage and bring on because there are some really good ideas and people who know what they're talking about out there who could probably help with tackling climate change and other issues.
Thank you, Ian. Nick, did you want to add anything?
Only that it's absolutely a Green Party policy to do exactly that and spread as widely as we can.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to ask the Labour Party now to comment. Alison or Fred?
I'd like to just say that, you know, I'm a big, big, big fan of People's Assemblies and direct democracy. And I think that what maybe wasn't mentioned before is the power to actually make recommendations, hear evidence and actually have experts come and speak to them and actually in some cases actually make, be able to make decisions themselves rather than politicians. I think it's great. And yeah, yeah. There's lots of examples of where it's worked. Yeah, I'm a big believer in it. Alison, do you have anything?
Yes, no, I entirely agree with that. I think some of the most innovative, extraordinary and successful ideas have come from the people actually doing the doing. And there are many companies, very many businesses who have that philosophy, who find solutions to problems within their ranks. And I think to have that access to people who have the motivation and the wish to help change is fantastic. So I'm all for it. I think it's quite, quite exciting and the right thing to do.
So, sorry, I froze again then, but what I was saying was Lib Dem.
That was the opportunity to go, Kirsty.
I think it was, Fiona. Why don't you go for it?
Everyone, okay if I speak?
Yeah, go on. Go on, let's keep going. Yeah, so this, I really like this question. It's really interesting to hear that the Conservatives are supporting the idea of bringing on, bringing, you know, more views in. Back in April 2019, when we had that climate change debate, I put forward an amendment where asking for the council to look at creating a voluntary organisation forum to bring together a lot of the voluntary organisations in this area and to create a citizens' assembly to look at policy options, to examine them, to look at how we could then bring actions back into our communities and for residents in order to contribute to the climate change goals. So it's nice that two years later, other people are sort of jumping on that. That wasn't passed by the Conservative Council two years ago. There has been some involvement since. I've been on this climate change advisory group and we've had two representatives from external bodies, one from SICA and one from the Wildlife Trust. But I tend to find that when there is involvement at the county council, it's quite controlled. One or two people can be involved, we'll bring them in, but it's quite controlled. I think what we need is that it's this kind of, everybody can have good ideas. It doesn't just have to be a couple of people on a committee. And that's the idea behind both a voluntary organisation forum, bringing lots of you together, and also a citizens' assembly. Let's see if we can really generate ideas rather than just having one or two people there as representatives of the whole community. The whole reason that idea was put forward by me was because I came and sat down with HKD Transition and talked to you, who are more expert than me, about what you felt West Sussex could do. You know, local involvement, bringing people together, that's in Lib Dem DNA. That's what we do. That's where I can help and facilitate. And so, yes, I absolutely support the idea of a citizens' assembly, bringing those people together and thinking about not just the ideas of what we can do, but how we can take it back to our communities and how we can make it work for our residents. So yes, I'm fully on board.
Twenty seconds, Fiona.
Only to say, I work in diversity and inclusion. I create employee networks at work. Their job is to speak their opinions to the leadership team. So it's a model I would totally support replicating at any level.
Thank you very much, everybody. Jemima, here's a bit of participatory democracy. You can either respond to what they said or you can ask your pension fund question. So you pay to your money, you take your choice. We've got three minutes.
Yeah, I'll just respond to what went on there. I'm just really delighted. I think it's so interesting that there's such a broad support for this very obvious solution to our very many problems. And I just really hope that the decision that was made a couple of years ago, you know, by the Conservatives, not to kind of open that channel, that they will be listening and consider in the future. You know, as supported by Alex in particular, to be, to be open to the wisdom from a broader cross section of people for what ultimately are common problems.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to stop it there. It's a few minutes to nine. We managed to get through most of the questions that were sent in advance. I'm sorry we didn't get to the questions in the chat. As a group of organisers, we'll have a look at those questions and see if there is any way that we can help get them addressed, but I can't make any promises. I'm really sorry. But I do want to say, really, really, really appreciate the candidates giving up the evening to us. You've really been generous in your time and your answers and you haven't hogged the time. So we really appreciate that. Also, very much appreciate everybody else giving up their time to sit on a Zoom call. I know some of us spending most of the day on Zoom, so to have an evening on it as well is not always the best thing. So really appreciate you all for joining. And just to say as a final thing, don't forget to vote. We've got to use our votes to say what we believe in about climate change. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. And thanks again to the candidates. Thanks, everybody. Good night.